Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is, uh, our regular May meeting. Uh, thank you, everybody who indulged me. Moved it, uh, from two weeks ago to do it at this work session. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And members present, Ron, you got everybody?
I got everyone.
You got everybody? Okay. Let's take a look at our April fourteen, uh, meeting minutes, please. This is from our regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for April fourteen.
Seconded. Alright, seconded by Doug. Any discussion? No? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Alright, do we have any comments on the agenda?
Comment, recommend we switch for the conditional use first? Is that not right? When the conditional use have to happen before land development?
I'm actually not certain what we have to do tonight. What are we doing tonight, Ron? Is it conditional use?
Well, the-
Tell me what, yeah.
Conditional use is granted by the, uh-
Come in for a bit.
By the supervisory last year. Uh, it might have been, uh, even November of twenty twenty. It might have been that far back. But now they've changed the plan of it. Instead of four buildings, it's gonna be three. Instead of forty-six thousand square, it's gonna be like fifty-four thousand square. So there are some changes that because this is in a flood zone or flood-
Mm-hmm.
It's gotta be re-reviewed again in some fashion because you gotta make sure you're in this flood plain, you're not gonna, you know, increase the pressure or the, uh, above the floodplain, uh, areas, et cetera. So I think there needs to be a little, I don't want to even say a mini hearing, there may have to be another hearing on the conditional use to hear those changes to make sure they're all okay. So if, if I am correct with that, and I'm not sure, but if I am correct with that, then the commission has to review those changes, just like you would review the conditional condition, as you did. You would have to review the supplemental conditional use, but they're all through your supplement to these two conditional years. And, and I think, uh, now here is correct, that if you say the conditional use is okay, then we move on to land development. I think, uh, engineer, that's basically said in order to keep this map moving, that the two items can be reviewed in tandem together. So I would say talk about the conditional use and changes, make sure there's nothing that's gonna hurt the floodplain there because I certainly don't want the floodplain, uh, uh, insurance to be affected in the township. And then you could go on to land development.
Hmm? There's no change in the footprint, is there?
No, I agree with you.
John, did we change the, you bought out or something?
No, we changed our name.
Changed your name? I'm looking for Louis. Okay.
I got that email.
Nice. Got it here. Alright.
And again, the, the review of the conditional use or the supplemental conditional use may be, uh, much to do about nothing, but I think it's gotta be addressed because it's in the floodplain. If it wasn't in the floodplain, I wouldn't be so nervous. But, you know, you do something in the floodplain that you shouldn't do, the township and all the citizens loses the ability to get floodplain insurance. I don't think we could do that fast enough.
Okay. John, this is your letter here from May twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, why don't you, why don't you take us through this a little bit here? But, well, you know what, before I do that? Nate?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm channeling my grandfather, pardon me, my finger. Why don't you tell us what the, the, give us a, give us the, the ten thousand foot overview of the changes? And then I'll go over to John here with your, with your review letter.
So, so the changes are really pretty simple. Before we had four buildings here, one, two, three, four. And the changes that made is these were all just regular storage units. Now there's gonna be climate controlled storage unit. And to accomplish that, what we did, filled in, there was an aisle like this between this building. This just filled in and made one large building with climate control because now circulation access to storage spaces. So in terms of impacts to the floodplain, the footprint is the same, the impervious area is the same, the elevation will still be elevated over floodplain since it was. So there are no additional impacts to the floodplain. It's the same, really the same footprint. The only thing that changed was the building area increased because we covered up that-
You covered up the aisle.
Between. So there were some specific references in the conditional use application, so we wanted to make a supplement, just to make sure that that was clear. But I think I can say, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, impacts to the floodplain, grading is the same, hasn't really changed the impact of the floodplain. Still, we need all the requirements your floodplain ordinance. And in terms of the use, the building square foot, uh, went up slightly, um, but really, I think the only thing that would have an impact is more vehicles. As you recall, it was a very low.
There wasn't many trips during the day, was there? A couple of dozen at most?
Yeah, twenty-four over, twenty-four vehicles over a, over a day period. And I think it jumped up to twenty-seven. But we did want to address it.
Is there an aisle down the middle of the, the center line of that new building, the big building?
Uh, circulation is from the interior. A walkway, a walkway.
Oh, but walkway, not a vehicle passage. Okay. Alright.
Can I make a motion?
We'll begin here from John first and then just a little bit.
Well, I, I concur pretty much with what Nate had said. Uh, we did issue a letter on May twenty-four.
Yeah.
We documented that the building is, or excuse me, before, thousand one hundred and fifty square feet now. Um, and one of the aisles has been moved, um, but, uh, we don't believe that there's any impact, negative impact, uh, on the floodplain or anything that's really changed materially.
Did you concur with the, with the elevation in the, in the impervious, which is really the big problem, the floodplain?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Are there any new waivers that are being requested?
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a, a summary. I think there's the waivers that we discussed in our review.
I mean-
Some tweaking on some language that was requested. So I did prepare just a new summary with just the language that was requested in your review on John.
Yes.
I have a summary list at the end, just like we did before. I can hand those out if you'd rather not.
Well, I wanna see which one. Is that nineteen?
I need to interrupt a fifth here also because I'm having to do the notes. Are we beyond the conditional use portion of it now?
No, we're still going. Yeah, it's on here. Yeah, it's on here.
Where is that list, Nate? Is that in?
Would you like me to hand out the, the-
Oh, I think I got it.
Or just want to stick with what you have?
No, no, you have it. I think you have it in a nice format. Mine's in a-
So the last page on the- Is a summary. It, as you recall-
It is.
It is. And there's just, um, John had, in the review letter, had requested just some of the references he changed.
Got it.
Because if you look at the, the last page is the summary. The initial is description.
This is the, this is what's widely revised. There was some requests for clarification on what they have been called. I think type of delineation versus pre-protection. So those three places.
How much, do you want to say something?
Well, I was just gonna make a, a motion with, uh, help my full review. Ready to hear one.
Yeah, let's hear. Let's hear what you have to say.
I was just gonna, uh-
Because we could still be in a, we could still be in discussion after.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna make a motion that, um, I don't know how I do this. I'm not, based on what I've heard, I'm not a lawyer, I didn't strike me that we need to go to another conditional use hearing. And that would be my recommendation. If we did need to go to, uh, conditional use, I would say we recommend approval, conditionally.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Doug Scribe. Alright, gentlemen, any discussion here? Anything you wanna hear about?
I just, I have one question.
Whoa, there we go.
What's drawdown time?
Drawdown time is the time that it takes the infiltration system to de-water.
Okay.
So we asked for a slight, um-
Wow, that's a real engineering word, de-water. Drain? How about drain?
I'm not talking about waivers, by the way, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sorry, I cut you off, Nate. Pardon me.
That's alright. But we can get into waivers, uh, I think once we get through the conditional, uh-
Okay. Anything else on, on the motion, Michael, Alberts? Anything else? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. That's approved. Alright, now, let's go on to the, uh, land development plan review number three, right? This is the land development plan, and this is what you just handed out with your request of waivers. So John, I'm gonna ask you, we've got a May twenty-four letter over here as well.
Yeah, I'd like to refer you in this letter to page two, the middle of the page.
Your letter?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I play this, to make things easier for everybody. We've all heard this, for seamless plan, I should say, and we have discussed this. Nate has, um, told you the minor changes that have been made. Uh, we've done a review, uh, since their prior submission, seeing that the comments have in fact been addressed. And I believe that they have, majority have been addressed to our satisfaction. So I'm saying that this letter, even though it remains somewhat lengthy, uh, that, uh, these are all these comments related to outside agency approvals, construction cost assessment, escrow and agreements, waiver requests, and a couple minor adjustments. So there are no major engineering issues remaining on this project.
Okay.
We agree with that, the stuff.
Really?
Any of the changes.
Now, because we went through, because we went through this with you guys a couple of different times.
We did. And, and as you recall, it's a somewhat unique project because of, uh, we have a, a large tract of which nine acres is going under easements and being protected.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, we did have, uh, because of floodplain, we have stormwater management waivers. We also have some just because your ordinance is inconsistent with the EDP requirements now. Do Act one sixty-seven, a draft is coming out shortly, and that will fix those all. And then we had some, some planned requirements. So, uh, we do have a number of waivers to go through, but I think in terms of the comments and what's been requested in terms of the minor changes, we're certainly left.
Alright. Anything?
Do you wanna go through each waiver or not?
Hmm?
Can we go through each waiver or not?
Well, I will go through, I, I will go through each waiver. Can we do, Ron, should we do this all as one motion at the end, or should we do the waivers separately? How should, what do you think would make it easier for the record keeping and the clear?
I think for the record keeping, it's easier because some are going to probably have conditions, but may not have conditions, but may be recommended outright. So, uh, I think it's easier to just do at least for my purposes, but you're the boss.
Well, for your-
Do it all at one time? Are we doing it all at one time?
No, no, no. Because, because they gave us the list of waivers, but-
Yeah, and I, I've worked on it over, over the last week and marked it up.
Okay.
I have it in front of me also. So that would make it easier for me to follow along too, so.
Alright, then, then let's do it, let's do it, hmm?
Nothing.
No, no, I didn't read what you were saying.
No, I was just trying to-
Okay.
Well, I can tell you what they are. I mean, if you-
They're the comment numbers.
On the six oh three C two?
Yeah.
Number three in John's letter.
Oh, it's not comment eleven anymore. That's, oh, that's, yeah.
Nate, Nate has that parenthetically under.
Never mind. There it is. There it is. Yep, I just crossed out the other one. There it is. Alright. So let's go, let's, let's go through these. So the request, the comment three request, type context map, property owner names and subdivisions with a thousand feet of the site. Alright.
Yeah, so that's, we've shown all the adjoining, uh, but if you did a thousand feet, you know, there's many subdivisions next to this, we could put notice on it, uh, just come to the scale of that. So then we've talked about that. So all the immediate adjoining property owners.
Yeah, that would be huge.
Not, not a thousand feet.
Okay. Um, you wanna do, you said one at a time, Ron? You wanna do them?
Yeah, because I can then just note them for myself.
Alright. Well, I'll make-
I'll clean them up later.
I'll make a motion that the waiver requested here in comment number three, the site context map, uh, I recommend that it be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Moses. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk to eleven. Four. Co- comment eleven, type of fence delineation.
What that is, is protecting trees, one, one to the servants, uh, there's a, a proposing just to put a nylon ribbon up to delineate that limit so that the contractor can see it. And nowhere to stop clearing trees as opposed to, uh, uh, the more rigorous fence that is called out. This is a forty-eight inch high fence, opposed as much to the ordinance. We've just on some other projects and, uh, we're asking a more convenient way to, uh, delineate that boundary and make sure trees are not removed beyond what's proposed.
And just so the record is clear, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna continue to note in my, uh, notes that the letter of May twenty-sixth that came along with the chart that goes through each waiver and provides the justification for each waiver is being incorporated as part of the record.
Yeah, it'll be basically an exhibit.
Because then we do not need to, oh, break the tail of each, then there will be in this place.
Alright.
The letter will be attached to the waiver form that offers it.
Alright. Well, I'd make him, I'd make a request that we would approve the fence delineation waivers law.
Okay.
Seconded by Doug. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, maximum drawdown time. Let's move on to number thirteen. Uh, hmm?
How do you know it's thirteen? I'm sorry.
Because you have it in the, it's actually, because you wrote it under, uh, that's what I mean. That's, yeah, sorry.
Got it.
That's, I was looking at the wrong numbers before, from the old one, so, number thirteen.
He gave me the letter now, after I spent a half hour going through it, and then the old numbers, it's the new numbers and-
You should get paid, man. Let me see.
Thanks, Nate.
Alright.
So this has to do with, uh, stormwater managed facilities, uh, the seventy-two hour drawdown time, uh, and the goal is to make sure they draw down before the next storm and work. So we have, uh, several rain gardens, one here and then one on out. They're six inches deep. So we haven't really done the infiltration. It's just that these will, that's the most water they can get in. We just have not verified how long it's gonna take those to draw down. Um, the request is, uh, additional infiltration, that's in the rain gardens, we've designed with a water elevation of less than six inches. They really aren't just our quality puddles that will either evaporate or transpare or-
Let me ask, let me ask this simple question.
Yes.
We had like three inches of rain two weeks ago. How'd they do? How do you think they would do in that?
I think they'd be fine, just like, you know, something in your lawn that you see gets a little water in it and then it goes away and-
Okay.
John doesn't object.
Yeah, John doesn't object. Alright, I make a, I make a motion that we approve that request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hello. Five, it just looks five feet from property line, comment fifteen.
So we do have grading along our property lines and we are, uh, pretty much, a lot of this is already graded out, but we're grading close to the property line within five feet, as required on the, uh, in your ordinance. Uh, we feel we can do all that work from our side of the property line, stabilize it and not grade a property.
Okay. I make a motion, we, um, approve this one. Recommend approval. Recommend approval, Doug? Seconded by Michael. Any, uh, discussion?
The only note here on, uh, township engineer review letter is that the waiver should be added to the construction sequence.
Okay.
A condition.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, construction.
Who was the second? I missed that.
My fault.
You wanna amend the motion?
Yeah, we'll amend it to add, that it gets added, that this waiver gets added to the construction sequence.
Doug?
It, it has been added.
Oh, it has been added. Never mind, we don't have to worry about it.
That's what it says here.
That was a question. I wasn't clear.
Yes.
I wasn't conditioned in February, it's dated here, yeah.
Ah, alright. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, seventeen, cut and fill within ten feet adjacent property line.
Sixteen, actually.
Oh, sixteen, sorry, minimum swale, sorry.
Uh, a one percent swale, uh, your ordinance requires a two percent swale. And we were trying to do a swale here and keep it level to get water from here down to here. It's at one percent, one percent by DEP standards is acceptable, actually encouraged because it is a water quality measure.
Mm-hmm. Water flows that way anyway.
Doesn't it?
It's going from here to get it down into the base.
Yeah, but I mean, there's that stream and everything else. All, every, basically everything, everything flows that way. Yeah, okay.
So it's just whether this would be, uh, two percent or one percent, the one percent is an adequate slope, water from there to there, uh, without overly deep, uh, problem. We did a two percent, we just got there with two.
Okay. Are all these waivers, all these waivers are storm, stormwater, right?
There's a series of-
Settlement.
Subdivision land development and storm. These are still, uh, land, uh, Saldo, we actually the twenty, the two hundred and twenty numbers, those are still water.
That's stormwater, okay.
This is a stormwater requirement in the Saldo ordinance versus a stormwater requirement.
Thanks. Thanks. God, I hate lawyers.
So how did you have to clean this all up when you get your new draft of the, uh-
Alright.
Act one sixty, the Act one sixty-seven from the county. County's working on a new updated ordinance to help maybe.
Okay, good. That would help.
In the works.
Alright.
Because it's also an F four requirement.
Okay. It'll be, it should be in place. Alright, I-
I recommend approval.
Yep. Michael recommends approval.
Second.
Seconded by Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's gonna go on to seventeen. Let's go there.
Mm-hmm.
Also with no objection to the request by, uh, our engineer.
Yes, yeah. I recommend approval, seventeen.
This is second.
Oh, there's a meeting sixteen.
This is- Oh, no, cut and fills deeper than Rita one. Yeah, that's fine.
But this is a, right.
All, yeah, alright. Approved by Michael, seconded by Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, eighteen.
Cut and fill within ten feet of the property line, like similar to it.
Alright, I make a motion, we approve that one also.
Second.
Seconded by, I guess, whoever, whatever. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the roof drain connection. Let's move down to number one.
So as a water quality measure, the ordinance is encouraged to take your roof drains and run them out across the lawn, not directly tied into the storm system. They're residential house that makes sense, and then across your lawn, and then it goes out to the street and that kinda gives a time to clean up. In this case, we have all pavement, so putting the roof drains down on the pavement and potentially in the winter, creating a slip and fall type situation, it doesn't make sense. But what we do have for water quality is this all goes to a water quality basin before it's just started to the creek. So I think we, at least the report, the intent of that by providing these water quality basins down here, that the report reaches the creek.
Okay.
Just the goal is to disconnect that flow from a direct route to the, to the ground.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved, approved. And twenty- Twenty-two, what's that? Alright, what's this one?
This has to do with, um, cutting back the two-year flow to the one-year flow. Uh, we're in a no detention zone, we don't have to maintain water because we're just going right to the creek. You're in the lower end of the creek and it's getting it out. We have met all the DEP, you know, we met the DEP requirements for water quality, which we think are, you know, really, uh, goal here and it's just the difference between your ordinance and-
Okay. I make a, uh, motion that we approve. Water quality. Seconded by Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Inland wetland buffer, number twenty-three.
So there is an inland wetland buffer and an outer wetland buffer. Um, we have, uh, we're named, we're comprised of three point two one acres of the site. There are no direct wetland impacts, but there are impacts to the buffers around those. The outstanding is, we're proposing a devenous impact of, uh, point four acres for about thirteen percent of that three acres of, uh, inner wetland buffer. And it's, uh, really to get the access drive into the site. So, uh, we're talking about, um, you know, bringing this driveway up through, we really don't have a choice but to go where that needs to be. It has, you know, can't be in the, in the wetland. It can be as far away from the floodplain as we can get it. So it's this driveway, we just don't really have any other way to get.
Make a motion, we approve that waiver. Seconded by Michael. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Outland, outer wetland buffer, twenty-four, what's this one?
Those are-
Oh, rain gardens?
Outer, yeah, primarily, uh, in these areas where we have, uh, stormwater management facilities, which are compatible with the outer, with the outer buffer of, of, you know, on those wetlands, for water quality. And they're, they're to collect the water and clean it before it goes into the wetland and then ultimately into the street.
What does it say? It looks like it needs to be revision?
Approved. Did you correct the?
Did you correct the ordinance section number on the notes and legends on the plan?
Didn't make the plan changes yet because I didn't wanna come in with new plans and do-
Okay. Okay, yeah, okay.
We'll make all the plan changes.
Alright.
John has no objection.
He doesn't have any objection, okay. I make a motion, we approve the one in comment twenty-four. Second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Mitch second? We'll give Mitch one on there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, approved.
And throughout that letter, Richard, you don't see your sign that the township engineer says that-
Yeah.
If the waiver's approved, then you gotta change the waiver table.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, yeah, okay.
It says nothing to be conditioned, wow.
No.
Doug, because-
He's gonna do it.
You, you didn't wanna do it until he knew he passed.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Alright.
You'll see that repeated in the number of, uh, number of, uh, upper of numbers.
Okay. Looks like twenty-five, there's no objection to this one either, huh, John?
There's no objection to any of these by the township engineer.
Okay. Minimum depth, what is it? Minimum depth, limited zone?
The limiting zone is when you dig your test pit and it kind of has, uh, rock or high water table. It's kinda variable in here. Basically, we're putting these basins right at grade, so we're doing the best we can. It's built firm and just trying to trap the water behind it.
Just trying to trap the water, okay. I make a motion, we approve that one, this request. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-six, looks like that's also infiltration and the rest of it testing the no, no objection. Alright, I make a motion, we approve comment twenty-six request. Oh, did you? Oh, seconded by Doug. All in favor, gentlemen?
Alright.
Okay. Twenty-seven, uh- No objection. Yeah, there's no objection. I make a motion, we approve twenty, comment twenty-seven later. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight is, uh, again, uh, something in your ordinance which hasn't been updated to the NPDAS part.
Oh.
And the more, uh, charts is consistent with the NPDAS.
Okay, that makes sense. Make a motion to approve. Okay, seconded. Mitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is the freeboard on stormwater management facility. So typically on a stormwater management berm, you have a spillway and then you have a certain amount above that, a hundred year flood. Typically, it has such small basins, there, you know, have six inches of water in them.
Mm-hmm.
If you have six inches of water and then you need a one-foot freeboard, it kind of really makes your basins a lot bigger and more involved than they need to be. So if you have very small drainage areas, you have, or these spillways of the, uh, the freeboard, uh, for different basins is three feet, two point two feet.
Oh.
Uh, almost a foot for the one and it's just less than that.
It's not even.
The water can run out for a hundred year storm.
Okay.
And actually, these are all in the hundred year flood, so, uh, chances are, the building itself and the basins are down low, so the hundred year flood may, so how, how high would the freeboard be?
Less than a foot.
Basin, less than a foot, um, one is slightly less than a foot, one is, uh, three tenths, two tenths, that's over the hundred year. So we had a, a real big storm here, and we get out of these basins throughout the spillway, and inches above that.
What does the DEP say about that? Anything?
They're, they're applying with that.
Okay.
We're under, uh, just, I'll tell you on the NPDAS permit, it's been accepted for review.
Yeah.
And it's under technical review. The House will have to, you know, we don't lose-
Right, and that's in, in here, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And I make a motion, we approve the waiver request for the stormwater management freeboard, comment twenty-nine. Seconded by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number thirty's gonna be the same thing. I make a motion, we, uh, approve the request for the waiver in number thirty as well, that's also freeboards.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, fence around detention or retention basins, number nine, oops.
So this is specific to, uh, this basin here, um, your order says four feet high split rail fence with three rails, which is a, a good standard for a typical basin. This one is gonna be actually located within the, uh, facility, so it's gonna have an eight-foot fence on the outside of the basin, so it'd be enclosed within the facility. But we're actually not gonna put a basin in here, it's only, uh, three feet deep, uh, so that we can put the snow in it. Whether you need a place to put the snow, a good place to put the snow from the site and have that. Whether you need a place to put the snow, a good place to put the snow from sight and have that.
So if somebody wanders drunkenly out of their storage unit and walks back and doesn't hit a fence and winds up in the basin, so...
They'll be up in here.
They'll be up in here.
And, and they were in a hundred year storm, so again, they were, walked out of the thing, it was in a hundred year storm, they would be up to their-
Hey, yeah, no, it's not a problem for me, but I'm just saying, I might be able to survive, but some people might drown.
Oh, you fall in a lot of drunken places, is that what you're doing?
Yes, of course.
On purpose, sometimes.
Don't fall in the river.
In this matter, if you look at number nine, and I've just rechecked with our attached engineer.
Yeah.
He wants to make clear this is for basin number one only.
Yeah.
That's correct.
The other basin, oh, will be found.
It's, it's gonna be where you put the snow, the melons.
I make a motion, we approve. All right, motion to approve request and comment nine. Uh, I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
One there.
One there, Doug's gonna run that one. And number ten.
This is relative to stormwater management landscape facility, uh, so it's calculated the number of trees by the perimeter of the basin. In this case, we're offered entirely by trees on the side, we're asking not to have to count that side of the, uh, basin and natural trees there. And John, this was the one comment we did wanna discuss on, there was a comment about, um, landscaping trees in the bottom of the basin. Uh, we really can't put them on the berm, but we need to put them outside. Yeah, actually proposed to take these and kinda spread them out down the, down the roadway because we thought that might be more attractive. Over, over the thoughts on where to put those trees, I guess, um.
Those are the ones that you had in the bottom of the basin? These trees are, yeah, they're down in the bottom, uh,
I mean, they might be better on the other side, I mean, really not buffering, they, this is the backside of Eagle Valley, uh, over here, if you've been there, dumpsters and utility.
Yeah, it's just utility.
Won't always be there.
So, uh, you know, I don't know if they're needed at all, but might be better to put along the driveway there and...
I think the driveway would be a good location, I mean, and the ordinance is written memorably and then we need a specific site. It doesn't always fit exactly, which is why you get your requests for waivers or make adjustments. Uh, applicant is willing to put in the landscaping, um, if you put it along the driveway, it softens the view, back of the building, and that would probably be a good place to put them.
I didn't wear the proposal on that map.
No, he was moved them down to the left.
Do you have a preference? I think they might be better on that side or, we can, we can just lock it a bit forward. If you're looking for the self-storage towards the other property.
The dumpsters.
Could be better looking, our way than it is the other way, so, you keep trash out.
Yeah, the blow, the, the, the bags and whatever, yeah.
That's what I would suggest, I'd put them on the, uh, forth of this end.
There. That side, yeah, whatever the, I, whatever's the way you taste it.
We could just shift them over there.
I would shift them over there.
All right.
And that would be a condition of the waiver.
Of the waiver.
Record, so that's not directly related, it, it's the same section, I believe, but it's a little bit of a, uh, one of John's comments.
Well, the other waiver's gonna be for the top basin, right?
The, the waiver was just to count, uh, not count the side that was already against the wood.
Yeah.
As far as that's the specific waiver. Discussion of where they go is more, uh, general comment from, in John's letter is the, uh, discussion of where to put the trees that are required.
All right.
Put this way then, we could just make a condition.
Yeah, I say we, we, I make a motion that we approve the waiver request there for comment ten, with the condition that the landscape trees to be, uh, installed, be moved to the, what is that, the south side of the?
South of the driveway.
The southeast side of the, of the driveway. That's what I would tell. Second. We have, uh, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we got him.
Can I make a motion, we recommend approval of the plant?
Yes, you can.
Before you do that, let me go through the-
Never mind.
All right.
I'm gonna do them with not. If I have here, do we need planning module approval or something?
I don't, we are under two hundred gallons a day, existing lot, we're under two hundred ga- or two hundred gallons a day, but for under eight hundred gallons a day.
I appreciate that, but do we need approval or exemption?
Our position is that we don't need, as we was planning, it's an existing lot with flow under eight hundred gallons a day. But on lots to a disposal.
That would be crap. I was, I, I was just-
That's okay.
Yeah, that's why we reviewed these and we did it correct, so, okay.
All right.
So then we don't need any written certification from either the sewer authority or Broadhead Creek with respect to hook up?
Water, water creek water, so we've, uh, have an application for water service.
So that we will need, but not our sewer service. All right, I have Broadhead Creek Regional or other authorities, if all of them. Do we need Monroe County Planning Commission review? All right, Monroe County Conservation District review. We have to spend it.
Yeah, he, yeah, he has the permit pending.
Have to be done then, or to be get done, okay. Do we have any soil erosion or sedimentation plans, uh, files?
They've been.
Okay. Uh, any other stormwater management plans such as drainage covenants, uh, plot regaining plans, things of that nature?
They've been filed, we put the township in, the country, right, so they've been done.
All right, do we need a, uh, Penn dot H O P or a attached driveway permit?
I don't know about township, but we don't need Penn dot.
Program control. So we're gonna say no for the attached also?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to, down in Stroud Township.
Yes, Stroud Township. Okay. Or any other permits like N P T E S, et cetera?
Yes.
Do you say compliance with the attached engineer review letter of May twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need any deed of dedications for any streets?
Nineteen.
Need a unification or merger deed?
We will have, uh, we submitted a lock consolidation plan.
I think that was granted already, was it?
It has been, we're just waiting to coordinate some details with Stroud Township and, uh, relative to the maintenance agreement on that common drive.
But unification and merger deed was done.
We, we have, we prepared a plan, we got approval with conditions, uh, the deed is drafted, but I think we're waiting to find, uh, Stroud Township should ask for some information on that. Uh, so we were in the Stroud Township Planning Commission last night, they recommended approval with conditions, uh, what they're asking to approve.
All right, so what I'll, and I'm gonna give this to the, Mr. Kramer here when I'm done to make sure that it's all okay with him, so I'm gonna put your unification merger deed as first round attachment. Do it on that item. All right, how about any grant of use for any rights of way upon any road, streets, anything? I know there was something in the review letter about the Sambo Creek easement or something, so I'm not sure-
Right, so there's nothing-
What do you wanna do on the form here with that, if anything?
I think we've agreed to put a restriction or work with the supervisors relative to the area along the Sambo Creek. I don't know if we dropped the form of that, but that you could-
Okay, well, that's in the John's review letter in any event, so once we say John's review letter, it covers-
Covers that.
Those areas anyway. All right, do we need an approved disagreement with security? Are we going to also then dedicate any of those improvements, so then we'll need a maintenance agreement then at that point?
No, we'll, we'll give you as many as you'd like.
All right, well, I guess what I'm hearing, no. All right, do we have any park recreation or open space deed to be paid here?
I don't think that's related to, uh, commercial development with-
Think we're good.
I think we need that one.
All right, my name is Penn Markers, if you set it to field and certified in writing by the applicant's engineer.
Yes.
Sound the waivers to be noted on the plan. Plan to be signed, plan to be notarized. All right, any other conditions that I missed, John?
I don't think so, 'cause I think I got most of them in my list.
Okay, so then, what I'm going to do is I'm gonna give me a moment here to, just, I wanna give this to, to Kramer to review, because then if he is comfortable with it and he can ask, correct his client to sign, then motion can be made for conditional approval based upon this. Do you get this, buddy?
No, five.
I don't know, I can't really work it for. All right, look at this again here.
This is one that they got, twenty-four.
Make sure you're okay, because you'll see it's a note to be done and I did check. That's okay.
It's all good.
While we're, while we're waiting for that to review, uh, for the same before that Julia said, you're meeting, you're gonna have, calling your D R D, Hoover something, Hoover moving or something.
It is another storage.
Yeah, another storage one.
Were they all filed, are they all filed, buddy?
I think they're all, summer preliminary, final summer preliminary. Yeah, the Black Buffalo plan is gonna be on for the, right, Franklin Hill's coming back. Franklin Hill's coming back, so that's gorgeous, off onto the top of my head. So you're gonna have to use your magic.
Are your, all your letters be done? What'll be done before?
Do they have to be done?
That looks good, Mr. Kramer, I have, if I supply them, I'll make sure you have a copy before you leave tonight. So I have to give me a moment to go to the copy room.
Motion's on the table?
All right, so your motion, thank you for your, no problem, was to, uh, I would say that your motion should include the fact that the agreement for conditional plan approval form has been accepted by the applicant and is ready for a second and vote.
I move. I'll second that. Any other discussion, guys? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It is, George, just give me a moment so I can copy it, you know, because I'm not sure if anything else on the agenda. Thank you, well, for those who carry over this, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Take care. He has a lot of shooting.
I agree with you. See, Brian, John's a caterer.
Just about, let him come back and get covered.
It wouldn't be quite as much if they hadn't built it so, the floods, um, add, add layers to it.
Oh, I know you do.
So which one?
The extra space one, that'll be, yeah.
Oh.
They move in or something like that.
Thank you, my goodness.
Hmm. Is that gonna be within the recreation area?
Water around the, uh, the bus, uh, bus station.
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Cool, what are you doing?
Yeah, it's over there, I think it's an expansion of an existing, move there. You see, you seen the move in, the, the Delaware Ghat, uh, storage unit.
Honestly, no, I saw it coming to my office, I opened it up and I said, Mr. He said, wait a minute.
Hmm? All right.
Do we have any others?
I, uh, no, next week's gonna be a mount, or next month's gonna be a mon.
All right, I'll take your mons for your trip.
Second.
That's what we gotta do, we gotta fast.
Boy, it's such a shame to waste. Hey, what are we gonna do with this stuff?
We're just gonna go right in the recycling bin over there.
Is that right?
Take care, everybody, when's our next one, June? Hang on, is it nine?
Still requires this? Our ordinance still requires that we all get a copy of this?
Second Thursday, tonight.
This is freaking expensive.
It's expensive and for them to do.
It is.
Expensive for them to do this.
Yeah. That's why we made, that's why we recommended some time ago, please, change it, let us, just give, they want to give us some eleven by seventeen to look at. Reduce it like, like eleven by seventeen.
Seriously, 'cause, I mean-
It is, it, it, you know, not that I care about it.